...interview?
Is it?
Was the legislator?
Oh.
Yes.
I was going off Jason, so okay.
That's it, yeah. Yeah. I can hear.
You're right, it is the legislator. Please, Priti.
Jason.
And Doug.
Jason's messing with you.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, council members. For the record, I'm Priti Shridhar, Deputy Public Affairs Administrator with the city of Renton. We're here today to do a wrap-up of our very short legislative session. And I'm not gonna, since it's short, I'm gonna keep the words really short as well and introduce Doug Levy, who's going to share with us what we were able to accomplish. The one thing I will say before Doug starts talking is that we, as Renton, had, were one of the few cities that, you know, have come away with something, small as it is, and it's all thanks to the, you know, tireless work that Doug has been doing on our behalf, so.
Good evening, council members. So we went all low-tech on you here, I think there's a paper handout, but other than that, we didn't plan any kind of a PowerPoint.
I don't think we even have the paper handout.
Paper handout.
Okay.
So that's really low-tech.
Very low-tech. So, I'll just go through a brief outline.
I will get some copies right now. Thank you.
I'll just go through a brief outline of the 2014 session. I think, you know, in retrospect, one of the things you all did that's very good is the agenda was fairly modest, and in a minimalist 60-day session, that's a good thing. I think as I go through this, the other sort of credo I would pass along is it's always good to not have any harm done to you from a session. But the report I'm going to give you is not great in terms of progress points. I have to be candid about that. So, the 2014 legislature had a short 60-day session. They did a few things well. They finished on time. That's an accomplishment, because that hadn't happened since 2008. They kept tuition constant. They passed something called the Dream Act, which involves financial aid for those children who have been United States students all their lives, but came, were brought to this country by illegal immigrants. So the Dream Act extends financial aid to those types of students. You know, they did do a Veterans Financial Aid Bill. They did increase the number of credits for a high school diploma from 20 to 24. Those are considered very significant. But I think, with all due respect to legislators on both sides of the aisle, and you all have seen some of the reviews of the session, it's going to be more known for a lot of key issues that were deferred and left on the table, and where important work is left undone and sort of kicked into the following session. So we had, for example, continued gridlock over transportation, literally. A No Child Left Behind Education Bill that the legislature really needed to do to secure $40 million in federal funds. They didn't. A capital budget did not happen. That's the first time in almost two decades. So, just basic infrastructure investment decisions, there was a real philosophical clash. And, you know, I noticed you all are looking at your zoning and regulatory approach to marijuana. You don't have a lot of clarity from the 2014 legislature, because they did not do a bill that merged some of the old medical marijuana system with the new 502 system. So, you know, down to a scale for us in Renton and for local government, you know, I dial back a little bit to November 2013, when the legislature had the special session on Boeing and aerospace. We were very fortunate there. You know, there were, there was a continuation of the tax incentives for both Boeing and aerospace suppliers. That helps us a great deal. There were some additional dollars for training programs that the, that will go to the community colleges, including RTC. And of course, there was $10 million to finish out the funding for the Central Sound Aerospace Training Center, which we're really looking forward to. So, you know, we came into 2014 luckily with some of those things under our belt. The one thing that Priti was referring to, and I really give a lot of credit, in particular on this one, to Representative Eric Pettigrew, but the legislature did, in their final operating budget, set aside $400,000 for what I would call some boots-on-the-ground grants to gangs intervention that involves direct street outreach. And frankly, Representative Pettigrew wrote that proviso with the South County Alive and Free Program in mind. So, obviously, we want to see you all compete for that, and we think you'll be very, very well positioned. There was also a technical fix in the legislature's budget. It's not new liquor money, but it absolutely ensures that the liquor money from 2013-15 will flow to you. There had been some conflicting language in the 2013-15 budget, and so there's a technical fix, retroactive to last July, that secures the money that Ewan and others have been budgeting for. And then on the very last night of the session, literally with about an hour to go in the session, the legislature approved a Senate Bill 5875 was the bill number. And that's very important, because it does a four-year extension of a $40 document recording surcharge that finances homelessness and housing programs. Typically, that money goes through the counties, and we as cities or groups like Arch participate in that. So, those were the main things that I would point to as good outcomes. And as we talked about, a very broad array of legislation that we thought was sort of harmful to our cause was headed off. And that's always a good thing, when you don't have to look at anything that's truly harmful to you. So with all that said, again, I'm very disappointed to report to you that there really wasn't adequate appreciation or recognition for the plight you all find yourselves in, and the role you have as really partners to the state of Washington, and local governments that expect some revenues to be shared and distributed down to the local level, and in the case of transportation, expect that the legislature will take action to resolve some of the toughest issues that you're facing, that really handicap your ability to move people and goods and do economic development work. As an example, we got 37 signatures in the House on a bill to restore liquor revolving account revenues. That bill was never given serious consideration, either in the House or a Senate companion. Cities made a lot of repeated emphasis over marijuana revenue, and indicating that, you know, a system starting up in July should start with revenue that is shared down to the local level. We pointed out, of course, that in the federal memorandum from the U.S. Department of Justice, they outline eight different things that need to be done to keep them from intervening in the states of Washington and Colorado. Five of those are very dependent on the actions of local law enforcement. So there was a letter signed by over 100 mayors, mayor law included, saying that we think it's critical to start this new initiative 502 system with a revenue-sharing arrangement. The legislature didn't go there, and in fact, the disagreements over revenue-sharing, that was clearly one of the factors in them not approving legislation at all. We thought up until the final hours of the session that a bill known as Third and Grove Substitute Senate Bill 5887 would be enacted. It was not. And so not only do we not have the revenue, but we don't even have the things like the phasing out of the collective gardens in state law. So, I think frankly, the moratoria extension that you passed is probably a wise move, because you still don't have a lot of clarity. We also had in our legislative agenda that we wanted to be very supportive of trying to restore funding into the Public Works Assistance Account. You all were fortunate that you didn't have projects on the last list that were sidelined by the diversion of money. But we wanted to be very supportive of that as an ongoing infrastructure program. The House voted 87 to 11 on a bill to end the diversion after 2013-15. The Senate had a very different philosophy, and that bill, House Bill 2244, did not pass. And I talked about the fact that there was no capital budget, first time since 1996. Again, I think give yourself a couple of pets on the back, because we talked a lot about whether we should try to secure a capital budget project in 2014. We ultimately played it conservative and decided that it was going to be a lean year, and we should wait. Good decision in hindsight. And then I would say, you know, we talked about indigent defense. In January 2015, you all will be under a new, in essence, a mandate from the State Supreme Court on how many cases any one public defender can handle in a given year. It's 400 a year, or there's a way to do a weighted system and average it differently, which you all are working on. But there was legislation, Senate Bill 6249, to help adjust some court fees so that we could offset some of the expected cost increases. Passed the Senate, did not make it through the House. So you're seeing a pattern here. Bills that went through one chamber or the other, but not both. So we'll have an interim study on how to deal with the indigent defense costs. But that's not the same as helping you, and you start staring this in the face on January 2015. And there were also more indirect for cities like ours, but a number of incentives, whether they would be the research and development tax incentives, or things like the Life Sciences Discovery Fund. Either they were discontinued altogether, or in the case of the Life Sciences Discovery Fund, much of the money was transferred or eliminated. And there's, you know, a very vigorous effort right now to see if the governor would be willing to veto some of the monies that got transferred, and try and restore the Life Sciences Discovery Fund to a little bit fuller health. But that's the outcome from the 2014 session, so maybe a little flavor as to why I say, you know, we can't really come away with it feeling very good. We can know that we weren't harmed a great deal. But, but looking forward, I think that one of the things, and not just Renton, not just cities, but local governments are going to have to do more of, is frankly, take our case and our communication and our messages external to the legislature. I think there's going to have to be a great more education about what we do, and why it's important for the state to share revenues and not manipulate them to other places. I think we're going to have to be in coalitions with our friends in business and labor and other walks of life more relentlessly, and I think it's going to have to be a situation where in 2015, the legislature knows it can't just keep ignoring this problem. So that's ahead for another day. I think I'll be providing you more thoughts on that in the weeks to come, but that's sort of where we stand. I guess I want to end by saying, for Renton, the city did a good job, as it always does, of, you know, bringing people to Olympia. I'm your hired person on the ground, but I think it's always helpful when you can bring people from the communities. So, the mayor and council member Prince, thank you for your trip down. Jay, Priti, a number of you were on the ground in Olympia to work on certain things. And, you know, while we can't point to a bunch of bills or a bunch of projects, I still think it's very important that we continue to do those things. So I really appreciate that. And I didn't get into a lot of specific bills, so if you have questions, I'm happy to take them, but that's sort of the overall snapshot.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. One of the last ones, that you hit upon, the Life Sciences, and what kind of, where did they take those funds and put them? Anything that's similar, or totally different?
Just a series of transfers. The House had not proposed doing any cuts to the Life Sciences Discovery Fund. The Senate had proposed rather significant cuts that virtually eliminated it altogether. They landed in a middle ground where they moved money around. Frankly, Councilmember Brier, I'd have to get you a better answer than that. I'll go back and do that.
Well, I was just curious if they were still in the general field, or if they're totally out of that, that area? Because I know that was, was important to Renton a number of years ago, thinking that we might capture some of that work here, although it hasn't happened like that. But I think it's still really important for the region, so.
Right, and our city has made a point of being part of a coalition of cities that try and support the tech sector, and this is certainly related. So, I'll try and get you a more specific answer as to where those dollars traveled in the budget.
Just one more. You've got your hat on to tell us what's going to happen next year? Any ideas with the elections coming up, and where we might be sitting? I know a number, my dear friend Tracy Idy's not running again, but I understand that, you know, that there's several that have dropped out of the race, and I wonder how you feel about what's going to be happening?
So I've been doing this for about 19, 20 years, and I've been a lot of that time for you all in one fashion or another. I can't think of a more critical session than the one that's coming up. The legislature is going to have to make some monumental decisions about K through 12 funding. They're not nearly done with complying with the State Supreme Court order. They've kicked the can on transportation a couple times. They have a huge debate over things like property tax, and how that may need to be realigned and adjusted to deal with schools' funding. They still have this whole discussion over marijuana. They left a lot of voluminous work sitting in front of them. And then you have major, major election races, not just Senator Idy's seat, which will be a big one, but the 48th district where Senator Tom resides. That will be a seat that will be, you know, that'll be a hard-fought race. Former Mayor McBride of Kirkland is already in that race. The 45th district where Senator Hill is from is now occupied by him as the Ways and Means Chair. That'll be a very hard-fought race. So there are probably about a half dozen races that'll be real vital to determining the composition of the state senate. And I think that will have a lot to do with how some of these issues are approached. So, you know, I think some of the same issues that were sidelined this year come into sharp focus next year. Transportation, education funding, you know, how to deal with a new, centrally a new industry on marijuana. Big, big topics, and we're going to have to be in the middle of most of them.
Just a couple, just one more comment. First, you don't look any more gray, so I'm glad to see that you, it looks like you survived very well. One other question about, do you think that we have the leadership? Is the leadership some of the problems with the House and Senate? Or, or the underlings? I mean, it just, it seems like it's been a couple of years where we're just not going anywhere, so.
Trying to be careful here, because my job.
Never mind.
Get in trouble.
Sounds generic.
My job is to be as bipartisan as possible and work with every political stripe and party down there. I would say, I think there's just some very intense philosophical differences about how to run state government. And it's causing some of the chaos and the, you know, the gridlock that we're seeing. The majority coalition in the Senate feels very strongly about holding the line on taxes, and frankly, manipulating the funding the state gets so that more of it is spent toward K through 12 and higher education. The House Democrats feel equally strongly that that's not the proper thing to do, and the state has squeezed every ounce of efficiency out of its current fiscal structure, and really ought to be looking for some ways to either raise revenue or stop, you know, stop offering some tax incentives that cost the state money. And those are, those are just very intense philosophical disagreements. I'm not trying to say who's right or wrong. It's just, you know, in 2013, it put them right up within a day of a, you know, a first-ever state sequester, in essence. And, and this year, you had the House saying, "We want tax preferences ended", and the Senate saying, "We want a series of tax incentives", and the compromise they made to get out on time was no tax preferences, no tax bills of any kind. I mean, even for you all in parks right now, you have to impose sales tax on certain things. And almost every member of the legislature would say it's rather silly. There was a bill to phase that out and make a, you know, create a more rational system of sales tax on recreation and physical fitness services. You probably wouldn't find more than three legislators that disagreed with the substance of the bill. But they didn't do it, because it got caught up in that whole philosophical divide. So it's a very tough environment right now, and unfortunately, we're swept up in it, as are many others.
Hopefully, things will improve next year. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Priti. Annual Self-Insurance Review.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lamb. I'm Risk Manager for the city of Renton. And basically, I'm going to go over how we've done the last year. You may come in through okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I do have a little higher tech here, if I can.
The microphone's picking up.
Sure.
One of the mics doesn't seem to pick up as well.
Yeah.
Oh. Stammered. Any ideas?
Jay, can you help him out?
It's very spotty. Maybe you use the other one?
Here, I'll do this one. Try that. If not, I'll be Vanna for you.
Well, I can stand up there, too. Okay, anyway, this is the 502, which is an Internal Service Fund with the city. The, being an Internal Service Fund means it's fully funded from departments within the city. And the 502 fund covers all liability the city may incur, which would include general liability, auto, airport. You can see the list there of the different liabilities that come into play. It also covers the property, which would be buildings, equipment, light poles, guardrails, parks, any type of equipment out there. Flood and earthquake coverage, auto physical damage, but not auto replacement. That is a separate fund. That would be the 501 fund. And then workers' compensation, that covers employees injured on the job. Boiler and machinery coverage, which is the equipment, usually within the buildings. Employee fidelity and crime bonds, and then unemployment claims.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, I just have to ask this question, because I heard on the radio today, they were talking about the landslide, and the fact that that would be a separate insurance, and that none of those homes would be covered unless they had an additional insurance that most home insurance companies do not offer. So, as I look at just flood and earthquake, they were saying that you need more than that, so.
Yeah, earth movement is one of those nebulous things that even insurance companies fight over, about who's responsible. Same with flood. Flood can be, you know, is it rising water from?
A river.
A river or a lake? Or is it water that's such as a heavy thunderstorm where it comes rushing down? Whether that qualifies as flood or not, that is very debatable. You're correct.
So, anyway, I just, that really caught in my mind that it's important to look out for those things, too.
Okay, well, for the full year of 2013, we had an average year, bottom line. It was very average. We had some ups and some downs, but when you totaled them all up, it was right about in the middle. See from the five-year history, and that is the total expenditures with the 502 fund over the years. Okay, I'm going to first cover some of the property coverage. This would be use of the 502 fund for any type of fire, theft, damage to city assets. Could be weather-related, such, you know, we did have a few weather-related claims this last year during the thunderstorms we had. It would also cover, you know, public artwork, the buildings themselves, and, and all the equipment. Okay, we have over $300 million in insured building values that are over $50,000 each, with contents of over 16 million. Auto coverage is over 12 million, but that's just for autos that are over $25,000 in value. We have inland marine coverage for basically unlicensed vehicles, such as backhoes, you know, grader, just anything that's not, not a licensed vehicle. And then there is some public art covered as well. We are members of the WCIA pool in our property coverage, and our liability coverage is with that pool. Over, as you can see by this next slide, the amount of in-house payments that we paid for losses to property was, well, this year was $158,000 in self-insured coverage. So if someone were to lose control of their auto, run into a light pole, just a good example, the 502 fund would pay for that light pole, and then we would go after the responsible party if we knew who that was. And it just totaled up that much during the last year. Our deductible over the last five years has been $25,000 per claim. In 2014, we just raised it to 50,000 per claim. Basically, it was a lot more economical for us to do so. And you can see the WCIA premiums per year. Had we kept it at the $25,000 deductible, our premium would have been $338,000 in 2014. But instead, by bringing it to 50,000, it was 298. And, any questions on that? Sometimes that's a little, little confusing. But overall, very flat. Okay, for workers' compensation coverage, again, this is for any injuries to employees that are covered by LNI statutes. City is self-insured for workers' compensation. We have an excess coverage of $500,000 per claim. The excess premium is based on our 10-year history, and it's 100% employer-paid, so it's paid by the city. Employees do not contribute to workers' compensation benefits like they do in the private sector. And the city utilizes a third-party administrator to handle our claims, who we just replaced on March 1st of this year with Everly Vivian, formerly with CCMSI. Their contract ran out, we decided not to renew. So, Everly Vivian, based in Kent, is now handling our claims and doing very well. We're very happy. Workers' compensation claims by year of when the injuries happened, ups and downs. And you can see that range anywhere from the $600,000s to over $1 million per year. But there's always a big lag in workers' compensation claims. And usually, they reach their peak in about three years after they occur. So that bottom number can change very quickly. Workers' compensation claims, where they're occurring, right now, we're having a peak in the fire department. You can see it's a rising number of injuries. And we're trying to get a handle on that, so we're aggressively trying to figure out the hows and the whys, and seeing what we can do to get those numbers down. Police has had some ups and downs as well. And Public Works has been very, very flat, and so have the other departments, as far as the numbers of injuries. Dollar-wise, it's over the last five years, you can see how much money has been spent on workers' compensation. People can file a claim up to three years after the incident occurred, based on statutes. So sometimes we get surprised, and sometimes we just, you know, just wait. As far as dollars are concerned, I've broken, over the last five years, the types of claims and the dollars spent. Generally, liability and auto liability were the most of the money spent. Public safety, and this is not related to auto, is close behind. The auto liability tends to be a lot of police-related auto claims. Questions on that?
Yes, Ms. Bray.
Okay, so the auto liability, you say all departments, so that does include the public safety and the police?
Yes, it does.
Is in that area? Okay. Thank you.
Now, just because we get lots of claims doesn't mean we pay them all. Over half of the claims are denied, zero payment. And then, you know, it definitely follows a pattern when it comes to anything under, you know, certain value. The numbers reduce until you get to the point where if a claim was over $100,000, over five years, we've had five, or four, excuse me. So very small number, and most of that you'll find is defense costs. Very little, very rarely do we actually pay out on a claim because we're not liable. And if we feel we're liable, we'll take care of it as quick as we can and get the thing settled before it can snowball in court.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, and so are these, like those claims we're just looking at, if we can go back, I don't know if you can go back.
Can't go back.
Okay. Are those, do those include where we just agree that they have a legitimate claim, we settle?
Those would include that.
So that's all of them?
And that is all the claims in the last five years, how they were distributed cost-wise.
Okay.
So there would be, what, 344, I think it was 344 claims total in the last five years, and that's how they ended up.
Okay, yeah, okay, that makes sense. I was just trying to sort out, and in fact, now that Jay's there, I can go back.
Hold on.
Okay. Yeah, then this one, it says claims by type, but is this the actual, what we actually paid?
That is the total number of dollars paid in liability.
So not what was requested in the claim?
No, requested would be much higher than that. People always feel the claims are worth a lot.
These are the settled ones, what we actually paid. Okay, good. Then answer my questions.
And then each month, I send you a report of what has been paid out in claims over the past month, what has been open, what has been closed, just to keep you up to date. So anytime you have questions on those, too, feel free to let me know, and I'll get you the answers as quick as I can.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, as far as where the claims are coming from, public works, street maintenance is our highest source of claims, so that's where the public basically is exposed the most. It's, you know, potholes, utility covers, running into curb, loose concrete. Basically, those are the types of claims that I will get from public works, streets. And police-related, so people tend to get upset when they get arrested, so they claim false arrest, or, you know, they're very creative with how their claims show up against the city. Engineering claims would be usually related to projects, such as the Rainier project. I've received 12 or 15 claims on that project alone. We paid out zero on those. They were all deferred to the contractor, and they would show up as a zero-cost claim.
Good.
Public Works Sewer is another common claim. That would be backup, sewer backups. And then water, the same problem, maybe pressure-related or leaks that people feel that we're responsible for. Golf course generates golf ball claims. I don't believe we've ever paid out on a golf ball claim. I've received probably 10 to 15 per year on those. Okay, any questions on that? As far as the amount of dollars spent for liability, we have our incurred costs, which are the amount we paid under the $250,000 per claim deductible. And if you total that up, that should total that same dollar amount that you had on the previous slide. And then we also pay a premium to WCIA for that, that coverage, which is about $20 million in claim coverage. And they have a premium that they charge us for their adjusting services and that excess coverage. You'll notice on, in red there, from 2011 to 2014, it's a climbing premium from WCIA. We are very concerned about that, climbing cost. And because of that, we are looking at WCIA very closely to see if we should remain in the pool or not. The, there's some pros and cons about staying in the pool. The pros are that we've been with them a long time. They're very good for us as far as their claims handling. We're happy with their service. They have good broad coverage. They have lots of employee training opportunities. They have some pre-defense work that they'll do for us at very low cost. They basically audit us once a year in some topic. It's called a compact. This year, it's land use, planning. Last year was information services. And then they are very stable because they are a pool. They have a lot of members, so it's a large dollar amount. So if the insurance market gets bad, there's less stability there, and the losses can be absorbed by that group probably more easily than we can as a city by ourselves. The cons are, well, you saw the increasing cost. Each year, the costs are going up. Also, the fact that there's a lot of different cities in this pool, there may be, well, there's definitely some coverage in that pool that we're contributing towards that we don't need, such as coverage for jails. Would be a good example.
Right.
We don't have a jail. And there are, I mean, there are others out there, but, I mean, there's, that's just a good example of things that we're going to pay for that if we didn't have WCIA, we could carve out the costs of that insurance to meet just our needs and not someone else's. There's shared limits and rates, which, again, if you have multiple municipalities, if other municipalities have a bad year, we're going to share in that loss. Okay? There are some conflicts as far as defense is concerned. WCIA has the control over defense of our claims, and they have the final say in when a claim is settled, because it's an insurance, basically, it's an insurance-type pool, so the claims are theirs once we submit them. We can't force a settlement or who's going to defend us have the final say. So that's, to me, is a con. The compacts, sometimes they'll require things of us that maybe really, really aren't applicable to what the city does, so we may, you know, have some disagreements, but again, they have the final say on that.
Can I ask a question regarding?
Yes, Ms. Bray.
So when they do that, do they do the same compact, the same audit to all the different, all the cities at the same time?
Yes, they do.
So, okay.
It's widely announced that this is the topic of the year, and then?
Right, and that's why it might not be as appropriate to us.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have to give at least a year's notice of withdrawal from the pool. It could be up to two years. If we, you know, decided in January to give notice, we would have to wait till December, and then we'd have to give a year's notice. It could be as long as two years. We did give notice this year. It's effective at the end of 2014. We can withdraw that, that notice if we feel we're better off with the pool, but we wanted the opportunity to be able to shop insurance, to compare, which we couldn't do if we had not given notice. So, and then we can also look at the different deductibles to see, you know, what's best for us. Okay? Any questions on that? It's a major step. That would be going from a pool to a self-insurance liability.
Yes, Ms. Bray.
We may consider going just property only and stay liability with them. If we're with WCIA, we must be in their liability program.
Actually, before, I remember when you came and talked to us last year, you mentioned that you were considering withdrawing, so I remember you bringing that up.
I was just going to say, so, so really, the option would be for us to then self-insure ourselves? There aren't other companies or associations that, like WCIA, then available in the state?
None that could handle our size.
Could handle our size, okay.
Right, I think if we were going to, if we're going to stay with the pool, WCIA is probably the best municipal pool that we could stay with. We're at a size right now, we're really sort of on the edge, and so cities larger than us, by and large, have gone self-insured and purchased supplemental insurance and other things, and so they've, they've sort of done, so we're, that's really what we're investigating there. We've, we've had great service with WCIA, so this is certainly not because we've gotten poor service. As Gary mentioned, there's a lot of good reasons to stay with them, but there are also some issues that at our, at our size and with the involvement we have, with the experience we have, City Attorney's Office and an excellent risk manager, there's not a lot of, we have the expertise that, in-house, that other cities smaller than us in particular don't have. And so for them, it makes, it's really a no-brainer to stay with a pool like WCIA. So that's what we're really looking at, and we have until, I think, September. I think we thought, they've got to know at some point, because we're big enough that as they begin to set rates, if we're in or out is going to make a difference on the rest of the pool. And so we committed to them that we would definitely give them a go-no-go. So we'll obviously be back to talk with you more about this between now and September as we continue to look at it. And as Gary said, we're looking at several different options, everything from a full-blown, we withdraw, to maybe we extract some insurance and self-insure.
So part of the, the additional rate, the rates, has to do with what other cities, what, what they're paying for other cities, right?
That is a portion of it, yes.
So it's not, you know, it's not based on the amount of work that they're doing for us. It's really based on what's across the board is going out, so.
It's a little bit. I mean, if we were to have several large claims, they do try to, you know, there's experience rate, rates, experience, our history is built into the experience rating as well, so.
I just want to be mindful of time. We've got about 14 minutes before the council meeting.
The rest is pretty quickly. As far as unemployment claims are concerned, we've definitely, they've been dropping year by year. There was a peak in 2010, but it's looking very good right now. One of the duties of risk management is to collect losses when we can identify a responsible party. In 2013, we collected $118,000 from responsible parties, so, I mean, it's, it's good, you know, when we can get it, and we'll take it.
Very good.
We are involved in training of employees, facility inspections, ADA compliance. We review all contracts and insurance certificates of contractors. We reviewed 322 last year, so there's a lot of them pass over at my desk. We review waivers for volunteer organizations. When we feel that there's no liability to the city or no exposure to the city, we'll go ahead and waive to help them out. We also issue certificates on behalf of the city for contracts that we enter into. For 2014, 2015, just, you know, quickly, our goals are to continue basically what we've been doing. Nothing really drastically new, other than we're trying to really work on the workers' compensation issues. There are some mandates as far as OSHA, WISHA, as far as training of employees for hazard communication. And we're going to try to maintain a quick turnaround for approval, so we're not holding up other departments. And then the highest areas of concern for risk management are workers' compensation costs, like I've already said. The regulations for workers' compensation are definitely not in our favor, and we complain whenever we can. And we are members of Washington Self-Insured Association, where we're trying to get the word out of things that we're not happy with. The regulations are very pro-injured employee when it comes to compensability. They're also very pro-LNI, but not very favorable to self-insured employers. So there's a lot of regulations that are just, don't make sense when it comes to the self-insured. Police-related auto exposures are definitely a concern. They tend to be ongoing. The cameras are definitely helping. We use a lot of video this last year to defend ourselves when people were making claims and auto claims, so it helped a lot.
Cameras in the patrol cars?
Yes. And then also cameras, you know, in parks.
Traffic cameras.
So we're already traffic cameras.
Right.
Those are all very helpful. So anytime we get a chance to push cameras, I will, because it's helpful. And then joint server liability is definitely a big exposure to the city. If you'd like more information on what that is, I can send you an email, you know, with attachment, just explaining joint server liability. Basically, if you're 1% at fault, you could be, you're having a deep pocket, you could be spending a lot of money to settle a claim. And it's just basically, in my opinion, not fair, but that's, and that's regulations, so. Anyway, that's, that's it. Any questions?
Good presentation.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good job working this, yeah.
All right, well, I'm adjourned committee of the whole. We'll be back in 10 minutes for the full council meeting.
And the children are awesome.
I love, because I love to give and know that I have a connection.
Get you right.